I call this meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights Board of Education to order. Mr. Gainer, would you call the roll?
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. Register.
Here.
Mr. Silverman.
Here.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Zucker.
Here.
Okay. Our first order of business is to go into an organizational meeting and the first thing that we're going to do is ask our, let our new board, our new board members, Jim Posh and Beverly Wright take the oath of office and Scott Gainer, CFO Treasurer, will administer that for you. So he'll take Jim.
Jim first.
He'll take Jim first.
Okay. Mr. Posh.
I'm stepping on that.
All right, if you raise your hand, please.
I, James Posh.
I, James Posh.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will solemnly support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education. Of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District.
Ohio.
Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
In accordance to the laws now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
My continuance in said office.
In my continuance of said office.
And until my successor is elected and qualified.
Until my successor is.
Elected and qualified.
Elected and qualified. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Scott, don't you have to make him do it by himself now?
Oh, I've got it down.
All right, Ms. Wright, if you'd like to raise your hand, please.
I, Beverly Wright. I, Beverly Wright.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education.
Of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District.
Of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District.
Of the County of Ohio.
Of the County of Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws.
In accordance with the laws.
Now in effect and hereafter to be enacted.
Now in effect and hereafter to be enacted.
My continuance in said office.
Doing my continuance in said office.
My successor is elected and qualified.
Until my successor is elected and qualified.
Our next order of business is to elect a board president for this year and the floor is now open for nominations.
I, Beverly Wright nominate Cal Zucker.
So we have Cal Zucker nominated. Any other nominations? Okay, then we'll close the nominations, seeing no more. The way we do this is that you have to call out the name of the person that you're voting for. So, Mr. Gainer will call the roll and you'll say who you're voting for.
Mr. Posh.
Uh, Cal Zucker.
Mr. Register.
Cal Zucker.
Mr. Silverman.
Cal Zucker.
Ms. Wright.
Cal Zucker.
Mr. Zucker.
Cal Zucker.
There you go.
So, so we have a new president, right?
We do, congratulations.
Okay, then I can move. I think we have to take your.
I just take your nameplate with you.
So it's hard to do nameplate and coffee.
This I know. You want to clean this up a little bit. Wow. Just kidding. Thank you very much. The next order of business is to elect a board vice president and so the floor is now open for nominations for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Ron Register.
Okay, Ron Register, any other nominations? Okay, hearing no other nominations, Mr. Gainer. Mr. Register.
Ron Register.
Mr. Silverman.
Ron Register.
Ms. Wright.
Ron Register.
Mr. Zucker.
Ron Register.
Mr. Posh, Ron Register. Congratulations, Mr. Register.
Thank you.
The next order of business is to appoint a treasurer pro tem, the treasurer pro tem acts as the treasurer if the treasurer is not at a meeting. So if, if Mr. Gainer is not present at a meeting, his duties would be handled by the treasurer pro tem. They would take role, they would handle the Robert's Rules of Orders and that type of thing. I'd like to appoint, if he's willing to accept the job, Mr. Jim Posh as the treasurer pro tem.
Great. Great. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We don't even have to vote on them.
Well, I was afraid. Gone my way. We will include that in the vote. Okay, perfect. So, so now I should take items four. Okay, so we're going to take items oh-four through oh-15. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions? Anyone, any discussion?
Just we might just say what the things are that we're.
Scott, if you could. Sure, I can run us through this real quickly. So we establish in oh-five, we're reiterating that Mr. Posh is the treasurer pro tem, you're confirming that in oh-four, oh-five. The dates of the regular board meetings is the first Tuesday of each month. Oh-six, we indicate payment to board members for attendance at meetings. Oh-seven is authorizing me to invest funds on behalf of the district to funds one, four, six, and four-oh-one, which is the general fund, the building fund, food service, and the non-public schools are fund four-oh-one. You are approving in oh-eight all the school cashiers. We indicate one cashier for each school building. We also authorize petty cash and change funds in oh-nine, both in some of the buildings and also you see the lunch funds there, and athletics also maintains a change fund. Oh-ten, you are authorizing me to employ an attorney to represent the district for property tax decrease complaints. You'll remember, and for the new board members, we only are involved in commercial properties. We do not get involved in residential property tax decrease complaints at this time. Oh-eleven, you're authorizing the fidelity bonds for the superintendent, myself, and the business manager. And then oh-twelve and oh-thirteen are memberships to OSBA and ETPI, which actually just changed its name to another entity. I don't remember what that is.
Yeah, I don't either.
But it's sufficient that we indicate ETPI here for tax policy. You're also authorizing in oh-fourteen, a maximum blanket purchase order amount on an annual basis for us to do a purchase order, no greater than $3 million, which doesn't happen often, but with some of the building projects and some of the utilities for the district will have fairly large blanket purchase orders. So this sets that maximum based on that section of a higher revise code. And then oh-fifteen, you're designating me as your public records designee if you choose not to go to the public records training off, the training that is offered by the state auditor that offers that, I believe.
Yes.
So I will attend, and as I do every year, and I can attend on your behalf, but you can also choose to attend if you, if you want to. So those are the organizational items that you approve on an annual basis. We do that, we actually have a student in the audience tonight who, as part of an assignment, is reporting on this. So we do that because statutorily it's required of us to organize on an annual basis.
Correct.
Every January. Okay, great, thank you. So you can call the roll now. Hey, Ms. Wright.
Approve.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Okay. And that concludes our organizational meeting and we'll go back into the regular meeting. We're at item A-two, the approval of minutes of the regular board meeting of December 15th, 2015. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Gainer? Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't at the meeting.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to section B, words and recognitions. Superintendent.
Tonight, we must switch the recognition a little bit. Instead of doing a student first, who is, Reggie is in practice, so we're going to give him a little time to get here. So we will start with our CTE program recognition. So I would like to call up our career technical education program of the month is auto technology. So we have program instructor Jeff Porter. If you can come up, please, and share with everyone some information about the auto tech program, what you do, and a student you want to highlight. Come on up.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. How are you? Can you hear me? Mr. Callender informed me about this evening, about the program being recognized. He asked me to write something up and I thought, I'm not very good at writing something up and reading it from a paper, so I'm just going to, first of all, tell you, the auto tech program is, to me, an exciting program for our students that offers many career opportunities and benefits to our students. Students going through the program can obtain national certification by ASE Automotive Service Excellence. I am an ASE master technician. I have been since I've been like 21 years old. So I'm very passionate about the industry and passionate about teaching this career field to our students. In our industry today, it's very complex. I talked to Mr. Callender today, I'm like, the kind of things I could talk about, and he's like, talk about how serious the business is. It's no longer, it's changed from 40 years ago, an oil change isn't an oil change anymore. How many people have taken their car into the dealership lately to have it serviced? Labor rate is over $100 an hour at most car dealerships. The reason for that being is the supply and demand, supply and demand of future technicians like Dylan. 20 years ago, you got a tire rotation, not a big deal, right? Today, I brought with me, I thought, what can I bring to the thing? Everybody needs their comfort zone. This is my comfort zone. You have to have a scan tool to reset the tire pressure lights on cars today. The government mandates that our tires have tire pressure sensors in them. Years ago, when I was still at Ford, there was a Firestone problem where tires were blowing out. Ford had the pressure set too low. Firestone says tire wasn't rated for that. All that came about and brought along the safety that every tire has a sensor in it now, and we have to check those sensors. Every time we do a tire rotation on a vehicle, you have to have a scan tool. The complexity of today's cars is long gone of just nuts and bolts. A lot of what we do is electronics. I had a friend of mine call me over the weekend, I'm stuck, what do I do? He lost power steering. So actually, it was my, my best friend's son, and he was in Cleveland, they're from Akron, so he called my best friend, he goes, what did he do, break a power steering belt? No, his car, we had to get it taken to the dealership. It needed the power steering module reprogrammed as a recall because it had electronic steering. Most people don't realize today, our cars are fly-by-wire. What we're controlling inside the car, we're turning a steering wheel, it's like a PlayStation steering wheel. It may not be mechanically linked anymore to the wheels, and when we press on the gas pedal and the brakes, they're not necessarily linked mechanically anymore, they're linked electronically. So the technicians that we need today in our industry are high-level technicians, which brings me to, why did I bring all this up? This new facility. I got to tell you, every day I have to get up and pinch myself that the district pays me to come here and work in this facility. If you haven't been there, I, I really would like for you to come and see it. I am so proud of it. I just stand there, some days I just have, before I go home, my New Year's resolution was that I'm going to start coming home before 6:30, 7 o'clock in the evening because it's such a great facility to be in. It's my life. I grew up around cars, I grew up in the industry, I went to college for it, and I just stand there and just think to myself, look at what I get to do every day and what I get to deliver to our students. This program is the only program in the Tri-Heights Consortium that students can leave with a national certification, an industry certification. To me, that's pretty serious and, you know, it just makes me proud of the fact that the district supported that and did such an outstanding job. I can't thank everyone enough for what was put into that program. I know George, I see George smiling. I know it was a lot of work on your part over the summertime. I'd stopped in throughout the summer when it was a dirt floor and I left going, oh my God, the place looks so bad, but, you know, it was a dirt floor, I wasn't around construction zones. Shops are my business. And after I seen those lights come on the first time, I was completely floored. So with that, I want to tell you thank you to the district, to the board. The program is just phenomenal. So Dylan, would you like to say anything? This is Dylan. He's one of my students in my junior program, and he currently works in the automotive industry.
Just from when I was a kid, I always loved cars. I love, you know, Hot Wheels cars and remote control cars, and I always wanted to do something with cars, so I was really happy that when I got to high school, I could actually, you know, go into a program where I could get to, you know, work on cars and learn about them and figure out how things work, and now that I can actually go and be able to work in the industry now that I have a part-time job. And I'd say that the facility we have at Heights is far nicer than the shop I work at. It's just great to be able to, you know, not just think about cars and have to go after high school and pay for schooling, that I can actually get it from the school without having to pay, you know, thousands of dollars for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time this evening and thanks for having us here. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you both for being here. Dylan, my car is the blue van. Mr. Porter, I just would say to you also, though, as much as we appreciate the thanks you gave us for providing the, as much as we, we appreciate the thanks you gave us for providing you the tools, we can't do it without you and your enthusiasm. We can't thank you enough for that.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
And thank you, Dylan. I know you was rushing out of here. Thank you so much. You did a nice job describing the program. And I know the other two students we want to recognize have not made it yet, so we can wait.
We can go ahead and, in case this makes a lot of noise on their behalf.
Are you sure we can wait to the end, if you would like to give them more time?
Go ahead.
Yeah, we'll just wait to the end and have them come up. But again, I want to say thank you to our CTE director, Brad Callender, who wanted to make sure that the district recognized the program and show that we, that it was and it is a long-term investment for us, and to have our teachers to come up and describe and our students to tell how beneficial the program is, I think is wonderful. We, in our new mission, we stated that we not only wanted our students to be college-ready, but we wanted them to be career-ready as well, so that they can make the choice if they want to go to college or pursue a career. But either way, that they were ready once they leave our district. So thank you again, and I will reserve the rest of this for when our students come later. That's okay?
All right. All right, so we'll move on. We'll table B-one for now. We'll move on to C-one. There's no requested audience tonight. So are there any statements from the audience? Mr. Gainer did? No, Mr. Shigalas indicated none. Okay, no, no statements from the audience, so that's C. So we move on to the superintendent's report, so you're on again.
Oh, okay. So we just had our second reading of the Heights High new course proposal and course modifications for the 2016-17 school year. Last time, we had Bob Swagger, who came in, and I'm not sure if it was Bob. Oh, there's Bob. Come on up, Bob. So we have Bob here too. All right.
Good evening. Happy New Year. Welcome back. I just wanted to reiterate for the audience a little bit about the new course proposal process, where we are, and then I'd be able to answer any questions that the board might have or give any other insights. The staff and students have proposed new courses for the 2016-17 school year. These proposals have been reviewed and vetted by their appropriate high school departments. High school administration and the educational service team members have further reviewed the proposals to check for alignment with existing academic offerings, state regulations, student interest, and coherence with the CHUH strategic plan. In accordance with the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District bylaws and policies, 20, or 2210 curriculum development, the following new course proposals are being brought before the Board of Education for consideration for approval. We are interested in creating a public speaking course. We would like to bring back the creative writing course that has been lacking from our course guide for the last several years. We are proposing to create a honors modern world history course for ninth graders that would fulfill graduation requirement. And then we also want to expand our college credit plus course offerings to include anatomy and physiology, American studies, African-American history, and then a college credit plus math with our tri-C partners.
Anyone have any questions? Any?
I'm not going to ask my questions from the last time again, so I'm okay.
I have one or two. Okay, so as far as policy goes, you bring this to the, staff brings this basically to our attention, three readings. Do we hire, I mean, are we hiring resources to take these or are classes being taken out of circulation to accommodate these new offerings?
It's a great question. We, one of the considerations that we give when we review our new course proposals is what impact it's going to have on staffing, on facilities, on technology, on even textbooks. So whereas the courses that have been brought before the board, they've gone through several iterations of people reviewing them to see if we have the financial opportunity to offer those courses, if they align. So many of the courses that we are talking about here are staff-neutral, which means that we would just reallocate existing staff. Some of these courses even are in response to not having courses run at capacity at our current high school, so we're trying to get more exciting opportunities for the, these courses to run near capacity instead of some of our existing offerings, which we might not even be able to offer because there's not enough student interest to get those electives to run at a fully-staffed opportunity.
So if you're going to take something out of circulation, you wouldn't necessarily bring it to us?
Right.
Like if there's an AP class, going to, for example, this creative writing, which is a great, I mean, I'm not trying to put cold water in, say, these are phenomenal opportunities for our kids. But if you were to take away, let's say, an AP class, you wouldn't necessarily bring it forward?
Sure. And the way that it works with the, we don't necessarily take courses off of our books because we feel it's always great to just have them there, and if we, you know, resurgence and interest comes along, we don't necessarily take things off. It's more about we're always looking to add things. The creative writing example here is really just as a reminder that it does exist, give it a little bit of publicity in case people might be watching at home, or at least also to just get an idea that this is also a reminder that look forward in our course planning guide when that becomes available. But specifically, we don't take courses off of our books, that we still could go back. And once the Board of Education approves those courses, we don't ask to say like, well, we're not going to offer it in 2017, so we don't ask you to take action on it. We just say enrollment is not high enough at this point in time, we might put it on every other year cycle in order to make sure there's enough interest for those courses to run at capacity.
Okay. I've heard, I mean, we are public liaisons. I've gotten multiple calls about a journalism class, and I'm not suggesting, I mean, you guys are the experts on knowing what you can fit in, how it works. If you have textbooks for it, I know we've offered them in the past, but, I mean, typically once a year, you'd bring this to us, so if there was going to be addition, and I'm using this as an example, like a journalism class, it's something that you would bring to us. Would it be next year, or do you do this throughout the year, or is this pretty much a one-time thing a year?
So the, the Board of Education has already approved a journalism course. It's one of those courses that exists. We've run it in the past, and what we would do is when we survey students to see their interests, if we have a large enough group of students that want to let that run, then it is something that could happen.
Sounds good. Well, these look like real exciting opportunities.
Yes.
Thank you.
Actually, in regard to Jim's comment, I just, from my, just the, I think we all received an email in regard to a journalism class. I, I'm very much in favor, have been for years, that we, because part of the component would be the student newspapers. I'm very excited about the possibility of bringing that back as a, really more of a multimedia class. So I, if something came before the board, I'd be very supportive of it.
There's also, shameless plug, but a fundraising going up for the journalism club right now, and I don't know how we can get the link for that, but they're trying to fund that right now, or trying to fund a club for that.
Right, and I will comment just briefly on that. That's the Black and Gold Newspaper.
Yes.
And I know that there was some funding, but I, I spoke to Scott Wartman today and asked, we, although I applaud everyone who wants to give, who have given to the Black and Gold Newspaper, they are going to work on a project to use those funds, because we have funding for the program, for, to operate the program effectively. So I think there was some miscommunication that we did not have, that the program, that Black and Gold Newspaper went away because of funding. It did not go away because of funding. So it is backed, teacher Courtney White, I think, is leading it, and there is operational funding for the program, and we're going to find a way to use those funds in a way that students can give back to the community, and maybe with a free publication of their writings or, or something. But I thank the community for, for assisting our students, and we're glad to have it back because it's been something that people have requested for over a year, and we have a lot of students that are excited about it. So, but we do have funds to operate the program, and hopefully, if we have enough student interest, as Bob stated, we may be able to put it on our course deck, I mean, put it during the school day, and it doesn't necessarily have to be just an after-school club, but it depends on how many students actually decide that they want to attend a class and et cetera.
One discussion, and I can't remember if you, you may have been there at the time, Jim, one of the discussions we had surrounding this was with the strategic plan in place, the discussion of what courses to even offer, what courses to even bring to us are all vetted past the strategic plan.
Yes.
So there's, certainly journalism is a program that many people in the community have spoken about, but there are other programs as well, and I'm sure people listening at home might think, oh, well, you know, what about, what about my favorite? And, and the, the point is, we need to stay focused with the, with the strategic plan, so the superintendent and her staff can.
Yeah, yeah. Right, and I think that's where I applaud Bob and his team, that they really vetted with the teachers at the high school, and just say, you know, what are some of the, you know, courses that we believe that we should bring back, that, you know, we talk about public speaking and creative writing. Those are some basic fundamental skills that we believe that all students could have. I mean, how many else fear getting, I mean, Dylan did a nice job just speaking, you know, but when you think about those and those 21st century skills that we want students to have, creative writing and public speaking are definitely ones, but I think journalism is good. I mean, Scott Wartman even stated today that he's willing to, to go and help assist the students in their writing with, so I think it's, it's good that we, that we have these. But, yeah, we want, we're going to stay focused on the strategic plan, make sure that the courses that our students are involved in and we're offering are going to have maximum benefits for them, and I think we're on that pathway. Okay, so thank you, Bob, one more time.
That's great. I look forward to seeing you in February.
Nope, nope. That's the only thing. Last one, my report is market calendars for January 26th. We have our state of schools address. So in that, we're, you're going to get some more information about our strategic plan and where we are and accomplishments that we've had thus far in our five-goal areas. We get some information about the financial landscape and our master facilities plan, so that's going to be, give us the opportunity to kind of share out with the community where we are and where we headed.
Thank you. I realize I was remiss, and we have two very important people in the audience tonight. We have past president Nancy Pepler, who is here, she just keeps laughing at us. And she's the past president, media past president of the board and past executive director of Reaching Heights, Patrick Mullin.
Thank you for being here. Okay, so we move on to section E, personnel, and I believe we can take all E1 through four together? So I need a motion for E1 through four, please?
So moved.
Second? We believe that. Did we get a second? I'm sorry. Okay, great. Questions, comments? Mr. Gainer?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Okay. Now we'll move on to business services. Now, we take these separately, I assume.
Yes.
Mr. Chigalas, thank you. So we need, first, let's have a motion for item F1, a recommendation to award a contract to Turner Caniglio Companies as the construction manager at risk for the reconstruction of Montessor and Roxborough Middle Schools.
So moved.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Chigalas?
Thank you. So this, late last year, the board approved the architect for the design of the two new middle schools. And now we have the company that will ultimately be building them once the design is done, and that is Turner Caniglio in a partnership. We did advertise as required by the code. We had eight companies submit responses. We interviewed three firms. We had a cross-section of folks on our interview team, and certainly Turner stood out as the firm that had good and really very good experience working with and constructing middle schools. So we're pleased to have them be part of the design team and pleased to make this recommendation tonight.
Questions, comments?
I have some, no, I have my usual business service questions, but not to this one, but I'll ask them at the end.
Okay.
Anyone else? Mr. Gainer?
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
All right. Item F2, recommendation to approve the lease agreement with the city of Cleveland Heights to use baseball fields number four and number seven at Forest Hill Park. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And Mr. Chigalas?
Indeed. So we are very pleased to be able to collaborate with the city in finding a temporary home for our baseball athletes while the high school is being reconstructed and that field is currently under a large pile of dirt and some construction vehicles and some other things. So this is going to work out very well for them as a temporary home. And again, we're pleased to have made those arrangements.
Questions, comments?
What's the rental fees? Approximately?
I don't remember offhand what the fee, I want to say it's like seventy-something dollars a game, something like that. It's going to be several thousand dollars a year, all told.
But it's, I mean, it's seventy or fifty?
Yes, 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 yes. Absolutely. It was very reasonable in the end, yes.
You can send that to us.
I can, absolutely. I can get you the exact numbers, yes.
We're doing some capital upgrades as well, weren't we?
Yes, we are doing some work to the infield, some benches, some dugouts to really make that field work well for the high school team while they're there.
So then, the reason I'm asking, so to a degree, then, the, well, the city and the community as a whole will, these are relatively permanent improvements, so there'll be some collateral.
They will, and the nice thing is, you know, we have an ongoing partnership with the city, and we both use each other's fields. And I'm sure going forward that, given the breadth of our baseball program, that we'll have a need to use that field going forward, so it will be an advantage for us, even after the varsity folks are back, you know, students are back.
We're just using it for the two years, correct?
Right, right, right.
It will be real important for us to know what our costs are because this resolution also approves our expenditures to improve the diamond or whatever.
Right.
And the rental fees. So I think we should ask you to get that to us as soon as possible.
Can do. Yep. I'm just looking, paging through to see if I did have it in here.
I remember we saw, I could have sworn I saw one, at least a draft of this with the, with numbers. I mean, it's not in this document, but I remember seeing it. It wasn't sticker shock the last time I saw it.
Let me have it.
We want to know what we approve.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
In designing, you mentioned the dugouts and the designs. In that type of thing, do you involve the coaching staff in any of that, or no?
We did, yes, absolutely, yes. They were, he was very much so involved in reviewing those plans and making sure that, you know, it would be adequate for the team.
Sure, sure. And the, probably a softball question, no pun intended, but is, is the, all the, in terms of regulations for league regulations, since this isn't our normal field, are, do we, are we sure that we meet all regulations necessary in order to compete?
Yes.
Great. Anything else? Mr. Gainer?
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Okay, F3, hopefully I won't mispronounce this, recommendation to approve the lease agreement with the Delage Landon Public Finance LLC for new copiers in all district facilities. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
So our five-year current lease is expiring, and we negotiated with our vendor, ACE, and this agreement will be a new five-year lease. It will provide all new equipment for the district, and we've had a very, very successful track record with ACE and the equipment that the, the equipment they provided. The new agreement is less cost, both in terms of the equipment lease and in terms of the maintenance cost and the interest rate for the lease.
You're saying ACE, but the motion is for something French that I missed pronounce.
It is. Delage Landon is the, is the leaseholder.
Oh, okay.
For this. ACE is the, is the local representative for the company that is providing the copiers. So ACE also provides the service side of the agreement. They actually service the equipment.
So these are the folks who have the note.
They actually hold.
ACE does the work.
That's correct.
Gotcha, okay.
Yes.
Questions, comments? I just want to highlight the one thing that you said, that is that it's all new equipment, but it's actually less expensive. I know we did this at my workplace as well, and it's a win-win because they have less maintenance to do because the equipment works so much better. But even though it's all new, this is actually a win for us in two ways.
But there's more machines as well, correct?
It's the same number of machines.
Oh, okay, I thought it, okay.
Okay. Mr. Gainer?
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Item F4, recommendation to approve quarterly contracts?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chigalas, anything to say on that?
Nope. Happy to take any questions if I can answer them.
I have two questions. Item, item four, tree of knowledge learning, 224,000 employee leasing for Heber Academy at Cleveland. What exactly is that?
That would be a Supardi question.
Okay.
So I would not be able to answer that.
Then I assume that's a grant, then?
Non-public schools.
So basically, and we're just being a pass-through for dollars then?
Correct.
Okay. Then the same question ends up being for A-plus learning centers with most of, so that would be Supardi.
Same thing.
Again, it's just a pass-through.
Correct.
So when you say pass-through, we're getting the money and we're just paying?
We're the fiscal agent on their behalf.
Do we do that with any markup or any additional fees?
We do have administrative fees that we charge back to the non-public schools.
Going to the state's pension for how they like to do a lot of money, that's why I was curious to see the source.
In fact, Miss Pardee does an indirect cost rate for all of our state and federal grants where we're able to get some administrative fees back for all those.
But that cost rate has been approved by the feds.
Correct.
Anything else? Mr. Gainer?
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And then finally, the recommendation to accept the listed donations. If I could get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second from anyone?
Second.
Anything, Mr. Shigalas?
No, other than to thank all of the donors for their generous donations. So appreciate it.
Something, Jim? You looked like you were going to say something, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I mean, you were.
I was just going to say the three donations is for Scott, you guys send out your office handles to thank you.
Now, Mr. Chigalas?
Oh, the, the thank yous for the ones going for Jimmy Aznow, Alumni Foundation will take care of those, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Just thank you very much to all the donors.
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr.?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Before you leave, I believe Mr. Silverman has some other questions.
Because none of, we don't have any, are, none of our, because the other Steve wasn't here. I had a number of questions. Should I just email you guys those questions?
That would be wonderful, if you would be willing to do that.
Because they're a little technical, and I have a feeling that questioning in regard to the, you know, pouring of concrete, I'll kick that over to, then my other question would be, just sort of, if we could get, I know we've asked before, it's sort of the, what we sort of known PI needs coming up in the next few years, if we could get that. And if, I know, because the revenue is variable because of collections, if we can get, using, let's say, the average of the last three years as our base, because I know there's a, we need to start having a conversation of what do we, how do we want to allocate those funds?
We have a five-year forecast that George Peck has put together, included in your packet Friday.
Dr. Dixon has been asking me to send that to her, and I, I am remiss in that I have not sent that to her, but I will get that to her for this week.
Actually, George, I have the, I have the list.
Did you get it from, okay.
I didn't do my due diligence and send it to you guys, but I'll send it out Friday. Yes.
I was trying to get you off the hook.
I know, but I didn't want you to be blamed for it. It's all me. So I have it. Okay. I get it to you guys.
And then the other one would be, when we signed off on the turf field for the football field, we had a conversation of the possibility of the, there was, every year there was an expense for seed and water, what have you, and the suggestion had been made that the monies that we would spend every year watering the field for a maintenance of a grass field, we would no longer have, but there was a possibility of allocating those funds into like a future football. We'd have to replace the turf in 10 or 15 years. Putting those, that small amount of money aside every year, I don't, when I asked Mr. Gainer, I think we didn't do a motion on that, so he, because it hasn't occurred. So the question I would pose is if the board is still interested in doing that, it would allow us to have a little bit of a nest egg, if you will, in 10 or 12, 10 to 12 years as opposed to having them have that expense being a big check in 10 or 12 years. So my, my thought would be, if we could examine that, whatever the money we were spending in the past was a usual allocation out of operating funds, if we could see what that amount was and actually have a motion, if there's a desire for it, because I'd rather the board in 10 or 12 years, I mean, Ron will probably still be on the board because he's been around here a long time, that way the board could then have a little bit of a nest egg to start with. I think it was around 50,000 a year was being spent on consumables. So my thought was that if we could continue to allocate that out into a fund like that, it would be a good seed money for a decade from now.
I mean, how much does a new field cost?
It's high six, high six, yeah. So the thought being was that over time, it's not going to cover the entire cost, but it would be a nice part of that expense. Basically, taking money we would, we were supposed to be spending on water, we're not spending that money anymore, allocated towards a replacement because we're going to have to do a replacement eventually. That was one, part of the reason why I was, okay, I'm cool with the turf if we can do it, but we haven't done it because we didn't vote on it. So.
We have to actually have resolutions to make that happen.
Exactly, right.
Maybe we need numbers.
That's sort of, yeah.
This PI information that you're going to be sending us, would that include, if I'm thinking of the right thing, would that, for example, include 10 years down the road, a field, or are you only going five years out?
No.
Right, this is five years out.
Five years out.
Right. And this is really a projection of what we can see right now and anticipate as needs in the next five years. Right? So it's not, it is not, what I guess what I want to make clear is, the PI funds that we have, you know, they're not an allocation to say, as Mr. Solma is trying to do, to say, we'll set aside money so that in the future we'll be able to rebuild our buildings, right? Or there just isn't significant, there isn't enough funds to do something like that.
Well, you know, at the library, if you knew you had to replace a boiler five years from now, you would have, five years from now, a column.
That's right. That's what we have.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
That is exactly what we have, yes.
These, the monies I'm referring to were coming out of operating monies because those, there was a yearly operating allocation for maintenance of the grass field. So that was sort of, my thought was, well, if the synthetic is supposed to theoretically save you money on that operating cost to continue, the question here is more of the, what do we know from a specific capital need out of the PI dollars, known issues? Because one of the things I'm very curious, and I'd like us to seriously examine, is depending on what our needs are, if we can take a portion of that and invest it into solar panels, PVA, because there's been a lot of desire, strong desire from, at the Facilities Accountability Committee for solar, the legislation's very murky on that, but I'm very curious to see if we could take a small portion of that sort of every year and allocate that and dedicate that towards the PVA panels.
I think, I think we're on, sorry, we just will need to look at.
Right, yeah, we need to see the numbers.
Do we have any projection on emergencies within that five-year budget? You know, each year something comes up that we haven't thought about, and we have to try to find ways to deal with it, and we do do some emergency stuff out of the PI budget. So do we have a little contingency?
Basically, we do, and, but what does happen is George Peckek and I and the superintendent, as each year approaches and each year unfolds, and an emergency comes up, we re-prioritize, right? We re-prioritize, and it's an ongoing process, depending upon what the needs are in that given year. So it never works out the way we planned it. We're always shifting and adjusting, and it is a living process, it really is. I mean, that's kind of a cliche, but it is, I mean.
I think the game changer, since this issue, this funding source was created in 92, what's changed is now with the high school under construction and the middle schools in two years, that, you know, a huge amount of our square footage, which we are constantly spending money on, we, for the short term, is not going to have that kind of necessity. So that's why I'm very curious to see what the, what the numbers are looking.
We have to keep in mind that we did set aside a certain portion of the PI funds to pay back the debt on a portion of the bonds for these projects. So, yes, we are losing some large areas that are going to be a drain on the PI fund, but on the other hand, we've traded some of that. So we've still got to allocate carefully, I guess, is what I would say.
And I guess I'd really caution if you are going to present us with numbers that we're very careful, that we're very thorough in where, what things have been allocated to what, you know, it would be easy to lose something from the equation, and we can't lose something from the equation, start allocating into the future, especially when we're talking about allocating operating funds.
Right.
Well, it would seem to me that it doesn't make sense for us to vote or look at any resolutions until we really look at that PI spreadsheet that you're going to be forwarding
Spreadsheet that you're going to be forwarding to us.
Yes.
I mean, so.
Agreed.
And if we're going to have that in a week, you'll bring this up in a week, I mean, it seems to me that's what.
Oh, and, uh, the, I, knowing how, I mean, it's, it's, hey, here's a suggestion, we get the data, the way, it, we're not, we're not going to be voting on this anytime in the near future, it's going, it's more of, get the information, and, yeah, and then, then a couple of months, and say, hey, remember I asked you that question, so, you know.
Well, it might be that we want to think about it as one of the work sessions that we might do, um, this year, because I don't think we're fully, um, allocated on that yet, are we? We are?
We have two that weekend.
Okay. So Cal has his work to do.
Yeah, thanks. All right, good? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item G, finance, together or separately? Okay, so we can, I can take a motion for G one and two together?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, Mr. Gainer?
I'll just mention, this is your annual approval of the tax budget, so the county budget commission, and you'll remember this from the library, Mr. Posh, uh, same type of a situation, every governmental entity has to approve a tax budget, where we indicate to the county our need for them to levy all the taxes that are due to us, so, um, the form is, is standard and, and stays pretty much the same, it lists all of our levies, and simply demonstrates the need for us to collect the tax dollars that we're entitled to, so, um, so every year, we're required to do the tax budget, um, and then, we do have a couple of amendments, uh, to the permanent appropriations for this year, um, the largest of those, there are actually only four funds, or four categories that are, um, that have changed since the last appropriation that you passed, uh, the building fund is increased, um, based on the spending that's happening there, the original appropriation this year was fifty-five million, and that has increased to a hundred and five million in the current appropriations, um, Fund O twenty-seven, workers' compensation is increased from ten thousand to twelve thousand, the four hundred funds, which are those non-public schools, and then any other miscellaneous state grants, is increasing from two point eight million, um, back in October to two point nine million now, based on additional, uh, grant monies, and the same with the federal grants, we have some additional grant monies, so that's increasing from five point nine million in October to six, just over six million here, in January, and you'll, um, you'll note that periodically, if there are any needs to increase, um, some of these funds, typically does not happen with the general fund, which is our operating fund, but some of these, in particular, grant funds, um, will bring appropriation adjustments to you as needed, um, it's typically been four times a year, so.
Questions, comments? Mr. Gainer?
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we get to move on to the board presence report, I guess this is my first report, um, I wanted to start by both welcoming and thanking Beverly and Jim for, for not only volunteering to be on the board, but campaigning, you don't know what you've done, no, I mean, honestly.
Oh, yes, we do.
Yeah. No, honestly, I can, I can tell you, it's, it's, it can be a challenging job at some points, but it is tremendously rewarding, and, and you get to directly affect the lives of young people in our community, and so thank you very much for, for, for doing this. Um, I want to thank all the board members for, for supporting me and having the confidence in me as president, I, I will do everything I can to live up to your expectations, um, I want to spend just a minute, especially for our new members, just to talk about, one, at least some of the roles of president, and I, Mr. Silverman reminds me quite a bit, and, and he's right, completely right, that as president, I, I get no extra votes, I, I still have my one, um, I don't get one point two, or, or anything like that, we are all equals on this board, and you should always remember that, um, my job is much more to facilitate the meeting, and to facilitate that your voices are heard, and that you get the information you need in order to make informed decisions, and so if ever you feel like you're, you don't have that information, or if ever you feel like you, your, your voice isn't being heard, this isn't your problem, it's, it's my problem, so, so please feel free to, to, uh, to come to me at any point, or, I'm sure my, my colleagues would say the exact same thing as well, so, so we're, we're a team, um, I guess I also wanted to talk for a minute about, it, what's obvious, I think, to everyone, is that there's a tremendous number of exciting things going on in our district right now, um, the most obvious, of course, are the building, uh, you know, the, the high schools just getting much more, more and more exciting by the minute, we're ramping up on the middle schools, we have a strategic plan in place for all the educational initiatives, and, and tremendous number of things, so what, all kinds of opportunity right now, everything's really exciting right now. At the same time, I think one of the things I want to make sure we, we keep in mind this year as we go forward, is the importance of staying focused, um, I, I think with all the different things going on, it is very easy to, to lose that focus, and, and, and I, I think to that end, having a strategic plan, and, uh, Dr. Dixon and her staff, and Mr. Gainer and his staff, in, in implementing it, will help us to stay focused, but we as a board have to stay focused too, and, and help to, uh, uh, we need to listen to the superintendent, listen to the CFO, and, and try our best to remain focused, um, you know, it, it's extending an overused metaphor, but each puzzle piece is important, but it's always important to keep track of what the puzzle's supposed to look like in the end, and, and while we're doing all this building, remember that our job is, is education, we are here to make sure that our students have every opportunity possible, um, I think one thing that I, I just want to highlight is, is that fine line that, that we walk as board members between diligent governance and micromanagement, um, I think every board member I've ever known, including me, has been guilty of, of stepping over that line and falling into that abyss, um, it's, we have to realize that when we do that, we take away focus from this, from, from the important work of this district, so let's all work together, uh, let's work with the superintendent, let's work with the CFO, and, and, and do everything we can to, to make this a very successful year, so, that's, that's my report for tonight, um, unfinished business, does anyone have any unfinished business? No? New business? Easy. Board committee reports, I'm going to just, Mr. Silverman?
I guess. Okay, uh, the next alumni, or, heightsgear.com has a open house sale on January the thirtieth from nine thirty to noon, room one oh six in Coventry, or basically the only room that's open in Coventry that morning, um, so a lot of good post-holiday sales, um, the Facilities Accountability Committee had a meeting after our last meeting, um, the one, only real, I guess the, the biggest thing that we, I think we've sort of, they and both, we and they have muddled through as far as we have two vacancies on their board, um, I know we'd sort of talked about casually about the, that they wanted to add, expand because of the middle schools, uh, they, for my, my, it seems that they're comfortable with just filling those two slots, um, the issue ends up being, though, I think that the, probably the model we use for the library board's a good example of, that I, I asked C Koo to sort of, hey, can you send to the board as a whole, maybe some characteristics or qualities that they're looking for in those two vacant seats, because we have that, which then sort of puts the onus on us of, we, I know we, we polled all the folks who had applied before, but we still need to give the general community, it's been two years, an opportunity, if anybody else wants to, is interested, so we sort of have to get our act together of, how do we publicize and say, hey, accepting applications, for how long?
It's on the website.
We need to, okay, so is that?
It's on the website.
Okay.
They have it till Friday.
Okay, then, then my question, then. Okay, um, but I think we should, we still should ask, um, C Koo and Jim Kuhl, the officers, what qualities that they're looking for, um, as far as the skill sets, um, and then, you know, I, the only other item I would have, which is, I guess, pseudo-new business, would be, um, the carpet, we have new carpet in the room, which I think looks great, it's been twenty years, so it's nice to have new carpet once every twenty years, and, well, the carpet, if memory serves, is actually leftover carpet tile from the Wiley Project,
Yes.
And the lights, if memory serves, are new fixtures, but they're new to this room because they are repurposed from the cafeteria at the high school.
Carpet's from the third floor of Heights High School, it's left for reuse, and the lights are left.
So all, all, basically, we refresh in the room.
Right.
First time in twenty years, I think it looks, it looks, and I think our, and our trades did the work as well, so it was all repurposed and reused, which is really nice.
Yes.
So.
Just because Mr. Peckek wasn't at a microphone, these all came from the third floor of Heights High, is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, um, let me just say one other thing, uh, this, this month is normally when we would assign new, uh, uh, committee people, seeing as we have two new board members, um, I'm proposing that we, let's look at our next, uh, work session is on middle schools, if we could do as part of that, we, we can talk about the, the committee assignments, doesn't have to be a lengthy, lengthy discussion, but there, there's a couple of committees that no longer exist, and maybe one or two that need to be put on, so I just, rather than just sort of throwing them out tonight, I thought maybe we can do that the next meeting.
Well, and, another thing I'd like us to examine, because I know we haven't done it in the last two years, would be if we could have some of our, either our work, probably our work sessions, perhaps going out to different buildings in the district, because I know that it's an opportunity for folks who couldn't, maybe, don't want to drive the Miramar, uh, maybe, you know, especially as we're talking about the middle schools, having a little bit, some of our meetings out in the community, give people an opportunity to, that they may not otherwise have when they come here, so I'd just throw that out there as something to examine, I know we haven't done it in the last two years, and in the nineties, we did it occasionally, um, I, I think we should examine, looking at doing it again.
We, we can look at, I will tell you that there was a period since, in between those two spaces you just identified, where we were taking, uh, them to other schools, and we were finding very few people coming, that does not mean that that's the case now, um, and there is an expense associated with it, so we just need to weigh those things.
Right, I, I just, my, my take is, I, I totally expect that, even if we, you know, if we go to Monticello, we go to Garrity, well, Garrity's right around the corner, if we go to Canterbury, I don't expect that we're going to fill the audience with people, but I do think it's us doing the due diligence of going out in, you know, it's not just here, going out, you know, periodically, I, I think there's value to that.
Any other, did you have any reports, I mean, that, the holidays, and mine didn't, didn't meet it between, on the holidays at all, so.
So, I mean, just to be clear, so we're going to talk about committee assignments in the work session?
Yeah.
Along with, I think there was a reading assignment that you had asked us to go through.
Well, the reading assignment won't be discussed in work session, but we're just, we'll talk about that at the board retreat.
Right.
Retreat.
Which is before the.
There'll be a test.
I think, uh, it happens on the same night.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's just.
There's one at five thirty, and another one at seven.
Got it.
You'll be graded on the reading assignment, too.
Just on chapters one and two.
Okay. Any correspondence and announcements?
No, if we can recognize a student that's here.
Men?
As young men are wont to do.